What's it know?
You want?
I think you can, I think Bill was too.
All right, I'll share. Have fun, I'm good.
You're good.
All right. All right.
Uh, let's call this meeting to order and I'll stand for what he needs. I would. United States of America. As you recall, the first stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome everyone and. Happy Halloween Eve. Um. Do we want, it can, does Nikki want to be? He says, uh, she's here, she doesn't know why her camera is working.
Is it?
Working is not working. Where Tim is, because Tim was gonna zoom in too, I just wanna make sure that. This happened the last time too, she says. You know, when I zoomed in, that one time my camera didn't work either. It's usually on the other end, it's a camera. The problem, yeah, because when Anne's zoomed in, it works and.
Usually there's a.
Is it?
There's always a little button, you gotta click on it. Yeah, it's gotta click on the thing to bring the camera. But it's deactivate.
Yeah. Yeah. You wanna know how to do on this end with a camera problem? Um. Can Nikki have her audio?
Yeah.
Hey, Tim, hello, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Um, so Nikki. He is on, but she.
Yeah, I'm here, this, the same thing happened the last time I tried to zoom in and I remember it happened to Diana as well, the last time she tried to zoom in. I don't know if I tried on my cell phone, there is, there is. It doesn't say like, if I click on stop video. There's just an X on my face, if I click on start video, I just get a no camera.
Right. Well, let me ask, Tim, is it okay for her? She can continue to take notes, you don't know, we can't see her?
Yes, she's not voting on anything.
Be visible.
She's not a town board for her, so she won't be voting on anything.
Okay. So Nikki, are you okay with that?
Yep, I'm fine, I'm here.
As long as that's really you, Nikki.
That is definitely me, I promise.
Like her.
Sounds like you.
Nikki, hi.
Hi Nikki.
Hi. That was James, oh, you, can you see us?
I can see you guys.
Oh, all right.
Hope you're feeling better.
Yeah. So, um, this is a special meeting tonight, um, specifically to hold a public hearing on the twenty twenty four preliminary budget. Um, but we also have just a few, actually two at this point, items of business. Nikki, I did, I took your stuff off because I figured. We, we can't do payment of bills without an abstract and voucher, so, um, I just left it off, um. But VR has a request, um, so I would, um, he's next on the agenda, so I would defer to him, um, at this point, but, um. Make his request.
Yes, so the request is to, to change up. Uh, spending some of the ARPA fund, which I've, we were gonna. Use for a ten wheel dump truck. After going through, uh, one of our pile trucks and it's a little more, uh, needed to replace that, so I got a quote. And I just need board approval to go ahead and move, move with that instead.
Um, you sent an email to each board member today, did everybody get a chance to read it?
Yes.
To explain it?
Just one.
Are you reading it now?
Yep, this one you sent today.
Yeah.
Just sent it out today.
So, do we have a contract number, this is on state contract?
State contract, uh, the OGS PC six nine two three six.
Is it on here somewhere? And you said that so.
Yes, I wrote it on that one. Actually, I sent it in the email too.
Or was it, say it again.
Let's say it. And actually, this logo was one fifty. One fifty, seven sixty two oh seven.
So it's a lesser, less expensive.
Yeah, it's less expensive, sixty five hundred Chevrolet. I wanna wing out of Minnesota. You're asking to switch to a different, a different truck? Yeah, I don't, I don't want that ten wheeler anymore. Because it's been pretty bad shape.
Oh, so it's one more shape.
Yeah, so the ten wheeler is hanging around longer. Well, yeah, we'll keep that longer, that just hauls materials for the summertime.
It's older, but.
And it's, yes, it's older, but.
Useless.
It hadn't seen salt. Like this thing is.
Right.
That's what I thought, I, that, that's what I thought I got from. Yeah, and that replacement, remember, that was like two hundred and seventeen or something.
Yeah, it was more expensive.
Yep.
So I would make a motion that we, um, approve the.
That was with the ARPA money, right?
Yes, that we approve the expenditure of, um. Stimulus funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty two dollars and seven cents. For the purchase of a. Twenty twenty three Chevrolet Silverado sixty five hundred.
It's actually gonna be twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty.
They didn't have pricing for twenty twenty four yet. So they're, they're going off the old price.
Okay, so, but we're going on.
So if you read right here, the, on the sheets that were sent out to all you guys.
Yeah.
Where it says, based on twenty twenty three, it's subject to change for twenty twenty four, please.
Okay, well, we're only authorizing one fifty seventy six, seven sixty two oh seven. Um, or at least that's the motion under contract number PC six nine two three six. Um, if there is a change in the cost, that'll have to be dealt with time, if that it is. Make motion second. Okay, any discussion? Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. And then the only other thing before we open, that we go to the public hearing is that, um. When we submitted the, if you recall, in September. The board authorized, uh, the town to apply to the Justice Court, um, Assistance Grant Money. Um, and we did, and we used the exact same resolution, because we have to submit a resolution saying that the town board supports the. The application. And, um, we submitted it timely and then they bounced it back to say that you need this specific language in your resolution. So I had to revise the resolution, because I think what we had said originally was that the town board authorizes the. Town supervisor, or words to that effect, I forget. Could have been just the town of Pompey to apply, but they wanted it to say specifically authorizes the town of Pompey Town Court to apply, so I had to. I redid the resolution to reflect that in the first resolved and ordered paragraph, and then also. To, um, I added a paragraph that, that references that this resolution will revise and supersede the one we passed earlier, so I would look for a motion to, um. To pass this resolution authorizing the J cap, uh.
Make the motion. I'll make the motion to, um. Cast a. Resolution granting. Authorization to submit requests for funding for the town court.
Through the Justice Court.
Through the Justice Court.
No?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. Okay. Um, so on to the, the main event. Um. So, Tim, the first thing I wanna do is waive a reading of the notice.
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Um. So I would make a motion to waive a reading of the public notice, um. Advertising this hearing. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. So. Um, hey, Jim, since Tim is not sitting next to you, that's, I don't know if anybody signed in or not, but if you could, uh, bring that sheet in.
What?
Um, could you? Maybe just give us a brief. Outline of. Preliminary budget and how we got to where we got to.
Sure. So. We started this process, um. Let's say, what, mid-August? Um, you know, our, our baseline is, um. You know, the, the twenty twenty three budget, uh, we compare that to, you know, where we are year to date and where we see ourselves going. Um, from there, we have to figure where, where we see costs going for the next year. Um, for twenty twenty four. We work off of, um, actual figures that we have for twenty twenty four, some figures are contract based, um, that give us a more concrete. Uh, you know, idea of where we're going to be. Uh, outside of that, we have to, we have to use our best guess, um, but we spent a significant amount of time working on this budget. Um, definitely was not easy, uh. You know, costs have been going up significantly over the past, uh, several years and they, they, they continue to, to do so. Um, you know, some of our larger costs that we've, we don't really have a whole lot of control over are going up substantially, so, you know, um. Employee pensions, your insurances, you know, health insurance, um. Liability insurances, they're going up ten to fifteen percent per year. Um, employee retirement close to doubled this past year, the pension system, we have, we have no control over that. Um, so, you know, we, uh, I think the, the town board did a, a, a really good job trying to keep costs in line. Um. Yeah, while, while, you know, trying to, you know, keep the tax, tax burden as low as possible, um, while also. Keeping an eye in the long term, making sure that our fund balance is healthy, um, and, and we'll, we'll be in good financial shape in the, in the years to come. Am I missing something?
No. What? What, so this, like, this preliminary budget we have to work off from? No, 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 we're, this is the, this is the budget. This is the budget that, um, we're presenting to the public for their consideration and. After we have a public hearing, if we, if there is, if there's anything that we need to tweak, we don't touch it. This is what we've done after we took each department's request, which was the tentative budget. Um. And moved it to preliminary by doing the work we did.
Okay.
Okay, so then, this is what, um, we're asking the public to consider. Um, there might be some tweaking of it, um. Afterwards, um, we always look into.
Yeah, there's, there's some things, you know, um. We're looking at workers' comp insurance, we're looking at health insurance, some options there, um, there's still some figures that we just don't have in the door yet, um. Like, uh, Delta Falls ambulance, for instance, is one that we don't have, is a final number yet. Um. But yes, it's still a work in process.
So as far as, um. Revenue goes, would you just address that, because I think that's important, the, the fact that our mortgage tax income is not going to be what it's been.
Yeah, um. You know, the past few years, mortgage tax has been, um. Out of cash, it's all, um, you know, after pandemic, during the pandemic, um. You know, people went on a, on a house buying spree, um, you know, they got cooped up, they got sick of where they were and they, they started looking around. Um, or they were doing renovations, so anytime a mortgage gets, um, filed, um, there's a mortgage tax and we get a piece of that. That's starting to go down, um, quite a bit, it's going back to pre-pandemic levels. Uh, the volume of home transactions just isn't, you know, what it used to be, and you, you see this on, you know, there's a store answering Qs dot com not too long ago. Um, it's just not supplied houses anymore. So, we're forecasting that to go down, uh. The, uh, budgeted. Twenty twenty three budget as a matter of was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars as year, uh, six. Um, and it, we've, we've talked about, you know, maybe even reducing that some more. Um, to be on a conservative side, but. Uh, that's, that's a tough, tough one to, to, to forecast out, we're not quite sure how that's gonna look. Um, on the, on the plus side, um. You know, interest rates are very high right now, so we're, we've able, we've been able to burn, you know, I'd say ten to twelve thousand dollars per month. Um, on the town's, uh, savings accounts. So that's, that's helped to kind of mitigate that somewhat. Property taxes, and we get to that, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, we might as well put it all out, this, this is what we've got right now.
Um, so property taxes, obviously, that's, that's, that's the, you know, the big one that everybody wants to talk about, um. As of right now, we're looking at a roughly three point five percent increase in property taxes over last year, um. The reason for the increase, you know, like I said, costs across the board are going up, um. Inflation is high, you know, some of our personnel costs, the, uh, salaries are, are set by contract in the highway department, um. It's a six percent increase that, you know, we're, we're, we have to, we have to buy, buy. Um. So like I said, the, the, um, employee pension costs nearly doubled this year. Um. So to, to cover those costs, we need to. Uh, obviously, we have to, we have to increase, uh, the revenue coming in to keep a, a balanced budget. Last year being, I'm sorry, this year being twenty twenty three. Um, the budget had, um. Had relied upon the town savings, our, our fund balance. Uh, and in the twenty twenty three budget, we were, we were using seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of our fund balance to keep that, uh, the budget balanced. A lot of that money went towards infrastructure, equipment, things of that nature, you know, like the garage, highway garage roof, um. Some other, um, equipment for the highway department, um. We can't afford to use seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars fund balance to, to fill the gap, um, if we continue to do that, we'll be left with nothing. Um, so we need to, you know, end our reliance upon the fund balance. Make, make sure that we have a, you know, a solid amount in there, so that we have a, you know, a, a good, strong, you know, rainy day fund, so to speak, um, for the, for years to come. Um, so ultimately, you know, these factors all led to us, um, having to increase property tax about three point five percent. Which. You know, frankly, I've, I've. I have to, you know, give my opinion, but, um, given the current state of inflation, that's, that's not a bad rate of increase.
And it works out to be. Literally. Eight cents. On a thousand dollars or eight dollars on a hundred thousand dollars, so. It's not. But, I mean, it sound, like, people focus on the percentage and you have to look at our tax rate, our tax rate is very low, so. Three point five percent of a very low tax rate is low, it's eight cents, versus if it was a higher tax rate, it would. It would, it would generate a, a bigger number, but it's a very low number, so. People's taxes in the town, well, taxes in the town are not going to go up. Much at all. And that's not to say that we won't have some tweaking, but I'm not sure. Um. Whether or not it would make us much of a difference as, as far as where we're at right now. Um, we just have less revenue. And, and at greater expenses this year, and the odd. The odd circumstance is that. Our budget is less this year than it was last year. We're spending less money this year than we are la, than we did last year, but we don't have the revenue. Coming in from sources other than property taxes that we've been experiencing, so. That's why we're in the situation we're in, does anybody else want to add anything to what I've said, because I'm not gonna start with it.
I mean. You know, you, you, I mean, just to explain that, you know, how. Actually spending, you know. Spending less than.
The highway budget is significantly less this year.
That's, I'm just, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, it, it. So. Anyway, that's, that's the lead in to the public hearing, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. Um, so. You know. Two names on our list, Dan McClan's first, and I actually know how to pronounce your name, so even though.
Hey, that's good.
Can't tell from the handwriting what it is.
No.
I know it's McClan.
So. Dan McClan, twenty nine eighty five, Michael.
So you wanna come up?
Sure.
Just so, so.
Oh, no, they, they've got you, never mind.
Oh. Camerons.
Messing with me here. So. I'm not here tonight because I'm worried about a change in the tax rate, you know, I get it, inflation's been high, operating costs are increasing, I understand one hundred percent, everybody's feeling that. I'm here more because I'm worried about how the town is spending money. I've heard people asking the town to hold an audit for over a year. And I've heard that the town has ignored these requests, and I've heard that no audit has been performed in a long time, is that correct? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that as a yes. So, I, I've witnessed behavior that can only be, has been described as unusual, there was a recent planning board action, I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about. Where we asked nicely to, the town nicely to consider stating one of the laws. The project moved forward anyhow, and we pleaded to town to do the right thing. We warned, we'd stand up for our rights and take legal action if necessary, and do you recall your reaction, Renee? You laughed. You laughed at us, and you said, do what?
You know, Dan.
I, I would. I'd like to finish, please?
You can finish, but do not characterize how I was, because I did not laugh.
There were half a dozen people there.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna continue, you, you know, don't deny it, a lot of people there.
Just did.
So, we were forced into taking legal action against the town, do you think I'm happy about this? I'm not, I've gotta pay for it, and I've gotta pay for it twice. This seems just irresponsible, all because the town showed favoritism and didn't follow proper procedure. Following the court filings, I'm not gonna get into it, but this could have been so easily avoided. But there is an agenda. So, I've seen how public comments have worked fast. Now, a few months ago, we talked about the request to treat everybody in the town equally, and the statement was. Was it's too hard, it's too hard to treat everybody equally, I mean, come on. So, I fear this public comment will end just like all the others, i.e. ignored. But I'm joining in and asking the town to hold an independent audit over the last seven years. The New York State Comptroller's Local Government Management Guide lists conducting audits as a key fiscal responsibility of the town governing board. It further states that the audit process is an integral part of the local government's system of checks and balances, why wouldn't we want that? This government has become increasingly opaque and no longer appears to be working in the best interest of the residents of town. These taxpayers have a right. To know how our money is being spent and how decisions are being made, we have the right to request oversight to verify that public's funds are being used responsibly. Since this town is willing to open up to scrutiny, I will be filing a complaint with the New York State Comptroller's Division of Investigations. And I recommend that everyone that's concerned about how the tax dollars are being spent do the same, I mean, why wouldn't we have an audit? All I'm asking, and all I've ever asked for, is for the town to act reasonably and ethically, for the town to treat its residents equally and with respect. If we had, there'd be no, there'd be no reason to fear an audit. I mean, if the town wants more money. Let's prove we can be responsible for what we have.
Sam, let me ask you something, what do you think we're hiding? What do you, where are you?
It doesn't matter what.
Oh, where do you see that there is an issue with, with the town's finances that warrant?
Doesn't matter what I think.
Yeah, it does.
I, I'm on board of a nonprofit, we hold audits every year to be transparent, it doesn't matter what I think. Why are we not doing an audit? I mean, this, this seems like a no-brainer to me, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And next is Debra and Brenner.
And Samantha Carrie wrote. And I just wanted to ask about the, um, the highway department, I looked, was, that was a hundred and fifty thousand, was that for one vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay, that's like a, just a truck, a pickup truck, or?
It's a sixty five hundred medium duty truck.
Okay. Seems like a lot of money, but anyway. Um, also, I wanted, I have a candidate, and I've been talking to residents, and a lot of people are upset about the trash, they don't wanna, you know, people are just, you know. One person, a senior citizen, or very small, like this couple, they don't wanna pay three hundred and fifty dollars, whatever it is, a year. Isn't there any way that we can, you know, if the tax, tax bill's going up, we can lessen the load on people that don't really want the trash service?
That answer is no, and it's, it's, uh, it, the, the Sots District, which is our southern Anavaga trash system, it, the town is a part of. With Tully, Lafayette, and Fabius. If we went out on our own and tried to cover trash. Um, services in the town of Pompey, we wouldn't have anything close to three hundred and fifty dollars for the year, which is just. Under, I think, I mean, just around thirty dollars, let's just say thirty dollars a month. For pickup that's once a week. So. I understand that people don't like it, because in the, in the day when we had Farah. Before my time on the board, but when we had Farah. They were used to less than a hundred dollars to get trash pickup. But Farah went under for exactly that reason, they did not, they could not afford. They, they, they so, they bid so low. That they, they went out of business, so, um, there is no. And we've been rounding around with this, believe me, the, the town supervisors in, um, the four towns, and there is no easy way. To do trash. Um, if you. And none of us wanna leave it to the residents, because quite honestly, some of you will be great about it. But others will dispose of their trash in ways that will not be appropriate, so we can't, there has to be some. Mechanism. And if you have a better way of doing it, because we've talked about tiers and we've talked about, you know, you can get a smaller bin and, but three hundred and fifty dollars, actually, quite honestly. If you went out in the market right now and tried to, to do that, unless you're like Nancy who goes to the, um. Rock Cut Road. Um, you, you, you wouldn't be able to get it for that amount, and the people.
I, I mean, I liked the trip, I personally, because I have a big family, but I were like, just my husband and I, and maybe.
I don't, you know what, I don't, I'm the same way, I'm, I live alone.
Mm-hmm.
I shouldn't broadcast that, but I do, and, um, I. I rarely put my trash out, because I, I don't produce that much, because I compost and I recycle and I do returnables, and so. My, I mainly have once a month, I walk my trash up my driveway to the top of the road. And I feel bad for people that are older that would struggle with that, I, I, I would, I do. I just don't know what the alternatives are, we've, we've, we really have taken a, a long look at it.
We have like bidding, like different companies bidding.
We hadn't, yeah.
How long's the contract go to? Well, it's the last year, but it's not.
It's been rebid already, I mean, it's already been bid and, and it's, they're staying with dependable.
Um, this, does this process happen every?
It's every, well, it's, they're. Again, this is before my time, but I was involved with this one, it was a three-year initial, but then with the option of adding two more years a, a year at a time, so it's really five years. So it's been five years, it's, it was up in August, so. September started a new. Three years with. A year. With two years of, I think, to add a year at a time. If, if, um, with the option to do that, so that's.
The contract though?
Yeah, but yeah.
We're contracted for three more years, pretty much.
Yeah, with, with dependable, and the price didn't go up this year, it might go up next year, but it stayed the same with all that's going on. Three, three hundred and fifty dollars is. I, I, I seriously. Go look and see if you can find trash service.
I'm not saying for my.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm just saying, it's like, anything close to that price. And I, and the thing is, is that people in Pompey were used to the old way, which was so much cheaper, if you wanted, you could opt, because it had the tiers, you could have either a single or. A multiple, um, trash pickup, but, um, as I said. That system failed. So.
And the last thing I wanna talk about, um, you know, I've always been an advocate for financial audit, I worked for the county treasurer's office, the city treasurer's office, that was just a part of government, and I really think that that should be something we do here.
Renee, can I clear something up with Debbie, please?
Yes.
So the actual truck, Debbie, is seventy three thousand.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
The, every, all the equipment that has to go on it is seventy seven. That's. Wow. So what is, so, I'm just so listy here. Sanders, wow, wing. Yes, yeah.
And just, I, I, I just have one comment about the audit. Because it keeps coming up. If ever there was a time to have done an audit, it would have been when I took office. And I didn't see a need to do one then. And I have been a hawk about the budget ever since, and the board members know that, and the accountants know that. And we switched accountants at the beginning of this year, so we have a new accountant.
That's another opportunity for an audit, when you switch accounts.
He is a free audit, Debbie, a free audit, we don't need, if, if he saw something amiss, he's not. I, let me speak for just a second, and then you can, you can respond, but if he saw, if Jim saw anything amiss, he would not want it on his. Um, term, he would want to point it out and make sure that we correct it, so I'm just saying it.
But he didn't go back seven years, he just, he's just doing current stuff, he's not going back seven years to see what might have gone.
But it, but it involves the whole, the town's complete financial picture, so if there was ever anything being done inappropriate, and an audit is like, if you're talking about. Trying to find, you know, money that's been, like, squirreled away someplace or somebody missed, that's not what an audit does, they look at your pro, your, your. Procedures, am I correct in that?
Sort of, um.
Because. I like to hear it. I wanna put him on the spot either, but.
I do audit municipalities, um, and. There's, there's two parts to it, right, you're looking at the internal controls and you're looking at, um, the financials, right, so you're making sure that, you know. The bank account balances are what they are, uh, the reckon, that, that they're reconciled, making sure all the liabilities are recorded appropriately, the revenues, expenses, et cetera, and you do.
You do that through, through testing, you're examining invoices, checks, bank statements, et cetera. Um, in internal controls, um, you know, you're, you're making sure that there's a, a, you know, a, a well-functioning system of internal controls. You know, that there's no indication of fraud, um, you know, things of that nature. So yes, I mean, it's, it's a two-part type of review.
But the point is, you wouldn't be auditing your own, you'd be, you're auditing other towns, not your own town.
Right, right, right. Now, that, that being said, um. You know, when I accept a job, I'm not employee of the town, right? I mean, I'm not an independent contractor. Um, when I, when I, you know, in, in, looking at accepting a position, a, a new engagement, um, I do due diligence, right? I wanna make sure that, um, you know, it's a solid organization, that the books and records are, are, are well done. Um, because ultimately, that's, that's a liability for myself. Um, and, and no time during my review, or during, you know, the work that I've done so far for the past, you know, ten months. Nothing's giving me concern.
That's current stuff, that's not back seven years.
Uh, no, I haven't looked seven years back.
That's what.
Right. But that being said, you know, the town is very well-run, and, and Tom did a fantastic job when he was here. Um, you know, the, there is a lot of checks and balances when it comes to, to government finance. Um, a bill does not get paid by the town without the town board looking at it. Um, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but four town board members are signing off on every single invoice before a check is cut. Um, so there's very, very little, if any, opportunity for some sort of mismanagement. If you're concerned about money going to, to people who don't, you know, who aren't entitled to it.
Well, there has been in the past, and you should be aware of that. I, I can give you an economic process.
Are you, are you back on the twenty thirteen, um, um, account, uh? Well, I don't, it wasn't even called an audit, it was an accounting review.
Right, so there's never been an audit, in other words.
Uh, uh, but I, is that what you're referring to, Debbie? Is the one that was done?
The only thing posted now that we have in the chat, which is a problem.
If you gave, and I've said this to you repeatedly, if you gave us a reason, if you showed us that there was some wrongdoing. I'm not talking ten years ago, I'm talking now. If you showed me something.
We haven't done anything, we haven't had one done in ten years.
What?
What do we, what else do we have to look at? Let's, let's do something so we can look at what we have.
In, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, it is a waste of money. It is a waste of taxpayer dollars to put it towards. An audit that we do not need based on my review of the financials in conjunction with the town's accounting, um, services. It's, that's my opinion. Take it up with the next.
Fun, fun is about.
Take it, uh, take it up with the next board, Debbie, because it's not happening on this watch.
I wanna, when, when you.
Good luck with that.
When you do a lot of other towns, what, what, what is your process? Are you looking at that year? Are you looking at seven, how many years? I mean, what, I, I wanna, I wanna know. My agents are on annual basis, so right now, I'm, you know, I'm just. Twenty-two audits, getting ready for, you know, I think I started my twenty-two, my three audits, uh, in December. When you do that, you're looking at just that year.
And how realistic is it to even go back seven years?
It's not. It would be costly, I mean, it, 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 just to put it in perspective, a typical government audit costs twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year. So, so if we were, and if we were, I mean, just saying, if we were to do one, it'd be for the year that just gotten by. And it'd be like twenty-some thousand dollars to see what happened in the last year. It would, you know, to, to, to go back like that would be.
Hundred and forty thousand.
Uh, I don't, I don't know that, that anybody would, I mean, the state might, you know, wanna do that, just because it doesn't cost them anything, um, but.
Never reason to.
Yeah. I don't know, that's. Now, now is it? Because it does come up, how, how, you know, do, do, do a lot of towns pay that, um, twenty-seven thousand dollars now, or have it done? How does it, or how, what's your experience in this? The reason I do it is for, uh, for debt, debt issuance, so there might be some bonds. Or other, you know, liabilities, you know, installment loans that have a specific audit requirement. Uh, so depending on the size of an infrastructure project, if they have a bond, you're, you know, dormitory authority or EFC or something like that. Uh, they may stipulate in the, in the bond, or, or movies may require it, that you have to have a financial statement audit done. Uh, I don't have, none of my clients are doing an audit, that's just an audit, you know. Alright, so if it, so the ones that are doing it are ones that are forced by a bond-type situation.
Veronica, is there anybody on the, on Zoom? Otherwise, we could wrap up the, the public hearing portion, if somebody wants to make a donation.
I'll make, should we close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, I, I oppose, motion carried.
I do believe that's.
Don't make a comment about the trash thing.
Yes, you can.
I, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm just, you know.
Part of the public hearing.
I, I, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, there, I'm, I'm just making some blanket things that I've seen over the years that I've been. Around, um, when I was firing a private trash collector, I was paying all I'm paying now to have trash collected. And that was quite a few years ago. It was nice when it went, was a lot lower. We also used to have a huge problem, I don't know how many people here would know, about, out of all your. I mean, your back roads, some of your almost abandoned roads, that they became dumps for anybody that didn't want anything. You know, my property, you know, they're, they're old Steve, for example, coming off of Purcell and Five, people go down that road.
People any ideas.
I mean, I just say, there, there was, there were any, any places, there, there was, that was a, it was a huge problem. Through, and I was younger, and, you know, I mean, I mean, I, I just can remember that being terrible. And since this has happened, I, I haven't seen that happening a lot. So I'm just putting it out there that, I, I do wish there was a way that could help some of the people that are, you know.
I don't need.
I have one silly bag of.
I wish we should get the town rate for the fire department, cause we pay a hundred and twenty dollars a month for trash pickup.
What's a town pay? We pay, we pay one ninety, one something, I forget. But it's commercial, and so it is different, you know, the residential is smaller, but the problem. To add to that, you know, asking what else we could do, is this, this is such a huge geographic area. They don't make any money, the trash haulers, because they have to travel from so, like, so much of a distance to get from one house to the next. When they're in the city, and they're going from next, you know, it, their neighborhoods, and it's right there, they make, it's, it's a lot easier, you know, it's a lot more, um. Profitable for them to do that, but to come out here and these four, if, if we didn't combine, we would never even have three hundred and fifty dollars. A year as our trash hauling service, it would be significantly more, just because it, it's so hard to get anybody to come out here. We had two bids, two bids, and they were within fifty thousand dollars of each other. So, I mean, it's, there's not many options, there really aren't, and, and it's not without. Um, careful consideration of what can we do. We looked at trying to do a tier system, and it was just, if we did, if we lowered the cost. And let people have a tier, the people that needed the, 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 instead of having it all be one rate. The people that needed more trash service were gonna pay significantly more. So it would have, it would have, and maybe that's fair, I don't know, I don't know what's fair, but it was, it's really hard to, like, get a tier system where anybody would.
And if you talk, we figure out, it's like, they, because, in order to streamline the way they are, their truck drivers and stuff are not. Looking at a little, this person is, is only supposed to, they are just driving down the road. They're taking as fast as they can pretty much drive, you know, from place to place, get this trash on with that thing, and on to the next. You know, they barely, you, you watch them, how long it takes them to do the routes they're doing, they are, it, their, their time is very short. And what, you know, cause I had an issue once where, you know, you know. They, they did not have the time in a way that the truck driver did not know, like, if, like, if you did not have payer things or what. They do not know who's, they're just looking at trash cans, picking them up, they are not, you know, so that's, it'd be, it would be an extra cost. To try to figure out, oh, this person only is, is gonna get this, you know, ca- cause you got the one containers, you can't, well, you can't have small ones. And, and if you have, that's, that's too unprecedented for the, the county of trying to keep track of a little one versus a big one, and.
And I know that people in the developments love this service because the old blue bins that we used to have to lug up to, you know, the edge of the road. Um, you would end up with trash all over the neighborhood because it blows, it blows around, and at least these are wheeled and, you know, they're relatively manageable. So, you know, it's six and one half dozen of them, I know that Debbie, it really is, it's not anything. Yeah, well, yeah. So, um, I would enter, and I just.
Oh, no.
I know, Nancy in the garbage. What I'm, what I'm hearing, you just spit, spit your name.
Sorry, Nancy Firda.
Probably all know her by now.
What are you trying to say?
I'm just saying your voice.
So. What I'm hearing is that, in, in, in the grand scheme of things, it's kind of a small thing, but it's the principle of this that bothers me so much. I'm paying for a service that I don't use or need to subsidize people. Because they were, were breaking the law. I don't think.
I don't like it any better than you, and I didn't like it when they changed, because my bill went from the ninety-eight dollars to the three hundred and, it was twenty-five.
Isn't it an enforcement issue? I mean, if, people should be responsible for taking care of their own garbage. If they're dumping it, they're in their backyard.
That's not responsible.
But you can portray that on almost anything, that, look at school taxes. We have the elderly that don't think they should be paying any school taxes.
A lot of those elderly that. I don't have children, I'm paying for other, fine, I get it. But, I mean, you know, where do you draw the line with all the subsidizing other people's lifestyles or whatever? I just, that's all I have.
Alright.
I got one question to, um, just to get it out on the record, they're like, an audit was, is like twenty-seven thousand dollars. What, what percent of a tax increase would that represent?
If we're only, if, if she, if Debbie's talking about seven years, which is really.
But you would know what it is.
And that would go back to the Carol Marsh.
Yeah, it's on a percentage basis. Point, point one percent, I think, from what I recall from the budget.
Take it up with the next board. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor, I. Oppose motion carried, we are adjourned.